I'd like to call this March 12th meeting of the Hampton School Board to order. Ms. Bowers, would you call the roll?
Mr. Harper?
Here.
Ms. Henry?
Here.
Mr. Kilgore?
Here.
Mr. Pearson?
Here.
Ms. Phillips?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Mugler? Here. Let the record show that all of the board members are present at tonight's meeting along with our Division Superintendent, Dr. Linda Shiflett, our Division School Board Attorney, Ms. Nancy Reeves, and our School Board Clerk, Carolyn Bowers. At this time, we will have our invocation and pledge. I'm going to turn things over to our student liaison, Mr. Ray Bolton.
Our invocation this evening will be given by Amaya Tharp, an eighth grade student at Phoenix Pre-K through eight school.
Good afternoon. As she said, I'm Amaya Tharp, and I will ask you to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may now be seated. I am now going to read a poem by an unknown source called "It's Up To You." One song can spark a moment; one flower can wake the dream; one tree can start a forest; one bird can herald spring; one smile begins a friendship; one hand clasp lifts a soul; one star can guide a ship at sea; one word can frame the goal; one vote can change a nation; one sunbeam lights a room; one candle wipes out darkness; one laugh will conquer gloom; one step must start each journey; one word must start each prayer; one hope will raise our spirits; one touch can show you care; one voice can speak with wisdom; one heart knows what's true; one life can make the difference. You see, it's up to you.
Thank you for sharing with us. That was a very inspirational poem, and we'd like to take this time to get to know you just a little bit better. So do you have a favorite subject in school?
Yes, I like foreign language.
And what language do you take?
Spanish one.
And do you participate in any sports or activities?
I cheer for Hampton High School.
How long have you been cheerleading?
This is my first year.
Oh, wow. Well, congratulations. Do you have any family that you'd like to introduce tonight?
Yes, I brought my mom with me, and she is the Teacher of the Year. So congratulate her. I also brought my fifth grade math teacher, Ms. Robinson, my sixth grade math teacher, Ms. Erickson, my principal, Ms. Owens, and my assistant principals, Ms. Worthing and Ms. Hunt.
Well, congratulations to you and your mom, and thank you for sharing with us.
Thank you.
Thank you for being with us tonight, Amaya. We come to the point in our meeting tonight where we have our recognitions. I'm going to turn things over to our Executive Director of Marketing and Public Relations, Ms. Diana Gallata, and she'll be assisted tonight by School Board Member Jennifer Phillips.
Good evening. We have several athletes, wonderful athletes, to recognize tonight, so it's my pleasure to turn the show over to Jennifer Phillips, School Board Member, and Beth Mayer, Coordinator of Athletics and Driver's Education.
Good evening. Tonight, we'll recognize some of our winner accomplishments. We begin with Kickitane High School wrestlers. Would Quinton Tucker, Kalib Tucker, Dantes Jones, and Kennard Tucker come on up? And the rest of the coaching staff. Kennard is the coach. Want to make sure we get all of our coaching staff up here. Two Tuckers and then the coach. We have Quinton Tucker was the Conference II Champion in the 120-pound weight class. Kalib, is that Caleb? I'm sorry. He's a Conference II Champion, and I hope he doesn't throw me down. He's also the 6A South Region Champion. Dantes Jones, Conference II Champion in the 132-pound weight class, and a 6A South Region Champion. Congratulations, boys.
First, I have to say, y'all look very nice, and we appreciate that very much, and we appreciate what you do. I know that wrestling takes a lot of concentration, dedication, and obviously, y'all have that in your mind, and you're doing well. And on behalf of the Hampton City School Board, we'd like to present you with this achievement certificate from the Hampton City School Board. Congratulates, and this one says Quinton Tucker, but yours will say your own name. Kickitane High School wrestler, Coach Kennard Tucker, and then it has the Conference II Champion and your weight class, and it's signed by the Chairman of the Board and the Superintendent, Dr. Linda Shiflett. So this one is Quinton's. Please? Do y'all have any family members here or faculty from Kickitane? I know I saw Mr. Davis over here. Stand up, please. Thank you. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Next, I would like to recognize the Hampton High School Boys Basketball Team and their Coach, Walter Brower, Sr., and the coaching staff. Come on up, gentlemen. As they're coming up, I'll tell you a little bit about their year. The Boys Basketball Team finished the year with 16 wins and six losses. We recognize them tonight for being the Conference 10 Regular Season Champions. Congratulations, boys.
For those of y'all that don't know, this year, the VHSL, which is the Virginia High School League, reclassified everything. So these young men were playing against, they weren't playing against their other schools. There might have been one that was in your conference, wasn't there? I think two. But they were playing against a lot of other kids, not just ones on the peninsula. So I congratulate y'all for being the Conference 10 Champ, first one this year, and we really appreciate it. And on behalf of the Hampton City School Board, we congratulate the Hampton High Boys Basketball Team, Coach Walter Brower, Conference 10 Regular Season Champions, signed by the Chairman of our School Board, Martha Mugler, and our Superintendent Linda Shiflett. And coaches, would y'all like to say something, please?
Good afternoon, everyone. I would like to thank the Hampton School Board for honoring us. It's a great pleasure for this to happen to us. You know, we have some great young men here, and they've done a tremendous job. I would also like to recognize Dr. Grove, sitting right here, our principal. I also recognize any other faculty members and administrative members that are here. This Mr. Mike Trigus, the Athletic Director, is he here? But I'd like to recognize him. These young men weren't supposed to do that much this year because we lost a lot of players from last year, and we only had three returning guys that had played some basketball for us. But over a period of time, we worked hard, and we, you know, got the job done. The good thing about this, we have 11 now, and eight of those 11 will be back. And I'd also like to recognize the coaches that are here. Eric Brown, would you step out, please, so they can see you? Mark Godwin, right here. My son, Walter Jr., helps with the team. He's the one that really checks into the academics and makes sure that they have everything straight for going to college. And I'd like to say that all of the seniors have qualified to go to Division One schools. Now, I'd also like to thank all of the parents that are here, friends, faculty members that showed up, anyone that's associated with us. We really appreciate you coming out. And Mark Godwin here has a double role. Not only is he the JV coach, but his son made First Team All-Conference, and so did Seante Melvin. And there was also All-Regional selections, and Seante Melvin made First Team All-Regional, and Markeith made Second Team All-Regional. And we're real proud of these young men, and we're really honored to be here tonight.
We'd also like to recognize the Girls Basketball Team from Hampton High School. Ladies, would you join me on stage with Coach Alan Jones and his staff? As I said, the girls coached by Alan Jones, this is his first year. They ended their season with 19 wins and seven losses. We've recognized them tonight for being the Conference 10 Tournament Champions.
That's wonderful. Thank you, girls, for doing that for us women, making us look good. We're very, very proud of you. But before I say anything else, I listened to the coaches up here giving accolades to the kids, which y'all deserve, but I think we need to give these coaches a big round of applause because they work for about 25 cents an hour, and they're not doing it to get rich. They're doing it because they love you guys and they love the sport, and we just want y'all to know that we really appreciate what you do. On behalf of the Hampton City School Board, we'd like to congratulate the Hampton High School Girls Basketball Team, Coach Alan Jones, Conference 10 Tournament Champions, signed by Martha Mugler, Chair, and Linda Shiflett, Superintendent. Thank you so much, and congratulations. Would you like to say something?
Firstly, I'd like to thank the School Board for giving us the opportunity to come here, recognize us for the hard work we do during the basketball season. Also, Dr. Grove, Ms. Mayer, for giving me the opportunity to coach at Hampton High School. The girls worked hard. We played Warwick three times, and the third time, we beat them at Scope to obtain the Conference 10 Tournament Championship, which is great for us because, you know, hard work, it showed that our hard work paid off. We worked hard, we continued to work at it, stayed with it, we didn't give up, and that's where we got to be. As far as my coaching staff, Coach Bloomfield is on the end. Coach Drummond is next to him. Some of our girls who made All-Conference, Khadija Berger was Player of the Year in our conference, first-year conference, 5A. She made Player of the Year. Also, she was First Team Region. Michaela Sale was First Team Conference, and she was Second Team Region. And Darah Pearson was Second Team Conference, and Naija Caldwell made First Team Conference. Also, as far as my seniors are concerned, Khadija Berger is on her way to Temple University. Michaela Sale is staying here in Hampton. She's going to Hampton University. Darah Pearson has verbally committed to the University of North Carolina Charlotte, which she will be attending after she graduates next year. So the girls have worked hard, and they're in a position to where they'll do good things at the next level as well. Our season has been great. We look forward to continuing to progress and continue to have success at Hampton High School.
While they're exiting, if we could get any parents from the Boys Basketball Team or the Girls Basketball Team from Hampton High to stand up so you can be recognized? You have a lot to do with this. Thank you very much. Thank you. Finally, tonight, we'll head on over to Ireland Street to recognize some of the Phoebus High School wrestlers. Could I get Malan Willis, Sammy Dama? Why do I always mess up the wrestlers' names? Evan Edler, would you please join me on stage? And Maurice Ward is not here, they're coach, but Deanna Brown, you are, so come on up, Athletic Director. We have Mr. Willis is a Conference 18 Champion in the 170-weight class. Sammy is the Conference 18 Champion in the 182-weight class, and Evan, ninth in the 18, Champion in the 195-weight class. Congratulations.
Congratulations, gentlemen, men, because you both look like nice young men. On behalf of the Hampton City School Board, we'd like to congratulate you for this achievement. Phoebus High School wrestler, Coach Maurice Ward, Conference 18 Champion, and then it has your weight class that you were in. It's signed by the Chairman of our Board, Martha Mugler, and Linda Shiflett, our Superintendent, and I'd like to congratulate you. Thank you for representing us so well. And do y'all have any family members here with you? And I know Ms. Brown's here. Is there anybody else here from Phoebus? No? No more Phantoms? Okay. Malan? Thank you. Did you want to say something, please?
I know I look a lot different than Coach Ward does, but I wanted to say thank you to these young men. They are numerous years, Evan's been with us four or five years, almost, wrestling around with our wrestling club, and Malan, the same thing. These gentlemen worked very hard, and I know, me for one, I for one, no way could I ever do the diet that they have to do for wrestling, let alone last for the six minutes on the mat. So congratulations, guys. Good work. Appreciate it.
Congratulations to all of our student athletes tonight, our wrestlers and our basketball players, our winter sports, and thank you, parents, for supporting them in their endeavors, both in school and on the athletic field or court, as it may be, or the mat, in this case. We move on now to our Superintendent and Staff Reports tonight, which consists of Item 3.01, which is the presentation of the proposed FY 2014-15 Operating Budget for Hampton City Schools. So I will turn all of this over to Dr. Shiflett.
Thank you very much. And while the presentation's being loaded, I'd like to introduce the OGU cohort class that's here this evening. If you would all please stand. And I can't tell you how exciting it is to see this because when we look at these young people, they are the Hampton City Schools' aspiring leaders, and it's just so gratifying to see so many of you that are so willing to give up your time and learn so many new things so that one day, you'll be able to step into leadership positions. So thank you very much for being here. I also want to thank Dr. John Cagiano. John, where are you? He's actually the instructor for the class during this, isn't that right?
Yes, this semester, they're taking a finance course.
They're taking a finance course, so how appropriate that they're here this evening. All right, so are they going to get a grade or grade me? Well, good evening, board members. Tonight, I will be talking to you about the Superintendent's Recommended Operating Budget. And I have to start off tonight with talking to you about a couple of things. This budget is built upon the Governor's Budget, which you know was released in December, but we did make a revision because when the House budget was released, there was a revision made to our local composite index. And because it was a revision based on some data that was resubmitted, we have included that as part of our budget figures. This budget is also based on a student enrollment for FY 15 of 20,000 students, which is a loss of about 150 students from FY 14. The General Assembly did sign and die on March 8th, but they did it with the House and the Senate leaving without a ring on a budget. So they will come back on March 24th and begin their work all over again. And what that means to us is that it could be as late as June before we have our actual budget figures. So what you're seeing tonight is going to be what we have built based upon our best-known figures at this point. We do our work in the fifth-floor conference room, and in that room, there's a sign, and it says, "We have a choice. We can simply defend what we have or create what we need." But when we look at the budget and what we've been through the last few years, what we've really experienced is that we do have a few choices. We defend what we need to have, but we're often left to create what we must. And so tonight, I'm going to talk to you about a budget that's created because we must. We know when we create our activities in our school division that we keep in mind that the school division is a vital driver of economic development in our city. We also know that we're one of the largest employers in Hampton. The housing values are tied to the quality of our schools, and we know that our schools provide so much more than education. They provide social support for both our families and our children, opportunities to participate in clubs and activities. They provide facilities for community activities. Engaged students, we know, become engaged citizens, and we know that high school graduates are more likely to be employed and be productive members of society. They're also less likely to utilize any kind of social services. Their children are more likely to be high school graduates, and I could go on and on about the benefits of having every child be a high school graduate, but the end result is that we have a much better community. And so what are we doing to make sure that we have this tight alignment with our economic development and the vitality of our community? Well, one of the things that we're doing is creating career academies at our high schools. And in this one, you see a picture of Beppel High School. And I have to tell you, the young people take great pride in wearing their scrubs throughout the day because so many students will come up to them and say, "Are you going to be a doctor?" Well, they're proud members of the Governor's Health Sciences Academy at Beppel High School. Our newest academy is the Aerospace and Information Academy at Hampton High School, and this one has some wonderful partnerships to include NASA and the National Institute of Aeronautics and Hampton University. And we're going to hear much more about this as the years go by. It's going to be an exciting opportunity for our young people. At Kickitane High School, we have what we call the AAA Academy, Architecture and Applied Arts Academy. Again, a wonderful experience for young people who want to go into architecture and all kinds of applied arts. The Information Design and Engineering Academy at Phoebus, also known as the IDEA Academy, really was, contains the frontrunner of all of our career academies, and that the Center of High Tech was started there many years ago. And also, you know that our Culinary Arts Program is also at Phoebus. But we don't just do things to create choice for our high school students. It goes throughout our school division. Examples of that include the Armstrong School for the Arts, our Cooper Magnet School for Technology, where our children participate in children's engineering, and they do design briefs, the same kinds of things that engineers do in their daily work. Continued, we have Jones Magnet Middle School, a very high-performing middle school, one of the top-performing middle schools in this region, our fundamental schools of Barron, Tucker-Caps, and Eaton. We have state-of-the-art Promethean boards, state-of-the-art technology to include Promethean boards in our classrooms. There, you see a preschool student navigating the use of a Promethean board in his learning. And as you know, we have our one-to-one technology initiative going on right now, and we're so excited about the opportunities available to our young people as a way to enhance and enrich their learning through this particular initiative. We have our International Baccalaureate Program at Hampton High School, and we have our improved on-time graduation rates. You recently heard a report from Dr. Woods about that. And you know, the truth of the matter is, when we look at our young people, we won't be satisfied until a ninth grader enters, and then four years later, they walk across the stage, every single one of them, with a diploma in hand, and they know exactly what they're going to do Monday morning, whether it's going to work, whether it's going into the military, or whether it's going on to some kind of post-secondary education. We also have Spratly Gifted Center and a very high-quality, well-known preschool program. Right there, you see our Moton students celebrating their 100 days of school. We've made a tremendous investment in our facilities, and many thanks to our city council for realizing that we needed to do some very important capital improvements in our school division. So our investment in our facilities includes our two Pre-K through eight schools, but as well as the investments that you've seen in such schools as Barron and Carey, where we've enclosed a breezeway that separated the two portions of the building. It looks great, but it also makes the building so much safe and secure for our young people. So Hampton City Schools really is a district of choice. We have award-winning students, faculty members, and activities designed for all of our students. You know, we really are an excellent investment. Every year during budget time, I present to you this portion that shows Hampton City Schools compared to its cohort partners. Now, these cohort school divisions were created when we did our MGT Efficiency Review back in 2009. And these are schools that are Virginia First City Schools. They're more urban schools. First City Schools. They're more urban schools. They're more demographically like Hampton City Schools. And I am so pleased to show this to you tonight, because this really shows the commitment of all of our curriculum and instruction people, our support people, our principals, and most of all, our classroom teachers. Because Hampton is up there in the red bar. And as I click through these slides, I want you to see something. As you see in English, where's Hampton first? When you look at math, well, we got beat out by one point from Roanoke. And I do need to mention that our cohort schools are Roanoke, Hartsmith, Lynchburg, Newport News, and Norfolk. But I want you to look at the gap between Hampton and all the other cohort schools in English. And I'm not going to be satisfied until the math isn't in the same position. Look at science. Again, Hampton. And history, again, Hampton. This is because of the work of our people. And it's not only in the areas of core academics. It's also in our graduation rate. So we have much of which to be proud. And this pulls it all together. Because when you look at Hampton City Schools, we are indeed the most efficient school division. Not only are we able to achieve the results of being first in almost all of those SOL core areas, but we are the lowest in per pupil expenditure. So tonight, I want to talk to you about our proposed budget for FY 15. The state currently provides about 62.2% of our budget. Our locality, 35.9%. And other funds of about 1.9%, primarily federal. When you look at the SOQ programs, which we also call basic aid, I'm not going to go through each one of these, but I do want to point out a couple of them. The very first line, state basic appropriation. What you're going to see there is the impact of re-benchmarking. You know, we are always very hopeful during times of re-benchmarking that perhaps we'll get a little more basic aid. Well, we got $50 per student more. And so that equates to about $487,000. You'll see there textbooks. And I want to call attention to that word, "split funded," because I'll talk to you about that in just a few moments. Probably the biggest impact that you'll see in our basic aid is the line, "special education." And you'll notice that we have a $2.6 million decrease. This decrease is due to a loss of enrollment, but also because of our move to the inclusion model, which actually requires less special education staffing. You'll also see a slight increase in prevention, intervention, and remediation. Now, the VRS retirement, you'll see that we have some money there. We have 1.2 million. And that's the state share of the increase of SOQ-funded positions. But I want you to remember that number, because later, I'm going to show you another number. And that's our share. And then the last line is remedial summer school, and that funds our K through 6 summer school. Under the incentive programs, as you may recall, last year, we gave a 2% raise that was funded by the state. This 2% raise really only covered, again, SOQ-funded positions. And the raise was to begin in January. But you'll notice for FY 15, that money has been taken. It's gone. Additional assistance with retirement inflation and preschool costs, that money was basically what we would call hold harmless funds of 1.26 million. Those funds will also go away. And next, lottery funds. I often tell people that there's this misconception that there's this big lottery truck that drives up in front of the schools and just opens its door and gives us extra money that we can spend. But remember when I told you earlier to look at textbooks and notice the word "split funded"? I think many people don't understand that at one point, basic aid contained many of the things that you'll see that are currently being funded out of lottery proceeds. Our ATG risk payments, those numbers are based on our estimated free lunch participants. So you'll see that we do have about 566,000 increase in there. The K through 3 primary class size, also based on our free lunch numbers, has an increase of about 819,000. And then there's our textbooks, split funded out of lottery funds, with an additional 108,000. I'd like to call your attention to just one item on this slide, the miscellaneous funds, an increase of 250,000. That is for the increase of our billing to Medicaid. Our folks have really done a great job of working to make sure that we recapture all cost that we can from our Medicaid funding. So on this slide, you're going to see a reduction in revenue of about 1.1 million. But I want you to hold on to that number, too, because in a minute, it's going to change. So our revenue deficits impact our ability to realize our school division goals. But revenue is really only part of the story, because the expenditure pressures really tell the full impact of the story. And so here's the big picture. I'm going to give you the big picture right now, and then we'll go into breaking down the 7.2 million. So the budget shortfall that we are experiencing is 7.2 million. And we know that our resources are already strained to the maximum. And additional reductions continue to mean loss of services, instructional opportunities, and changes in the way that we do business in Hampton City Schools. So you might be asking, "Well, why do we have a shortfall?" Well, it's primarily a result of factors that are beyond our control, a loss of state revenue, and I'm going to talk to you more about that in a moment, increase in the Virginia retirement system cost, increase in Hampton employees' retirement system cost. So you see that some of our retirement funds are really driving these issues that we have with our budget, an increase in health insurance costs, and then also the local loss in real estate values. So what's happened in our state revenues over the past few years? I think you might find these figures rather startling. From FY 9 to 11, Hampton City Schools has lost $32 million in state revenue. The loss in FY 10 alone was $18 million. When you look at the loss in state funding, the net loss from FY 09 to FY 14, $21.5 million. I don't know about you, but I find that amount staggering. And it's why we find ourselves in the position that we're in. And then when you realize that in light of this, Virginia ranks eighth in per capita income, but 32nd in per capita state taxes. Here's a picture of our revenue FY 09 through 15. And you can see at the height in FY 09, we were at 215 million, and we're now at a little over 195 million. Now, Virginia ranks 38th in the nation per pupil funding for K-12, but it ranks 13 in state corrections expenditures per offender. So what have we already done as Hampton City Schools? These are things that we've done in previous years. We've eliminated or reduced services. We've closed six schools. We've eliminated spouses from health insurance plans. We've reduced transportation. We've limited funding for capital replacement schedules, for example, our buses and our computers. We've restructured departments, and restructuring often means that we've eliminated positions. We've deferred capital projects and maintenance. And probably the most significant thing is that we've cut 431 full-time equivalent positions. Now, I say it that way because FTEs mean there's many more people that were impacted than 431. It's 13.7% of our workforce, and it's mostly our support personnel. So what's in this year's gap? Our FY 15 projected revenue is $195,884,940. Our potential local funding, and it's stated as potential, because we don't know for sure at this point. This number could actually go up, because the city is still analyzing its revenue projections. And so what you see here is our FY 15 revenue shortfall. So remember, I told you to remember the 1.1 in a previous slide. You have to add to that the potential loss of local funding of 750,000. That takes us up to 1.8, almost 1.9 million in loss in local revenue. Now, at this point, you know, we don't know what's going to happen in the local revenue. We'll have to wait as the city goes through its budget. Okay, so now let's go drill down deeper, excuse me, into what's in this year's gap. Remember, I told you earlier that retirement really is a primary driver, the retirement fund cost. And here it is. The Virginia retirement system has an approximate 3% increase to us. That's $3.3 million. The Hampton employees' retirement system, another 1.3, almost 1.4 million. And that is actuarially done every biennium. The Virginia retirement system is still not at the point where it needs to be. Currently, it's about 80% funded. And the General Assembly has indicated that we must be up to 100% funding by 2018, 2020. So we're going to see these increases in VRS expenditure pressures. Health insurance, as the health insurance currently exists, would be an expenditure pressure of 1.1 million. And in a moment, I'll talk to you about some mitigating factors that we have on that one. Property casualty and liability insurance, if you recall, earlier, we had a placeholder in here of about 200,000. These are the most recent numbers that we've received, and it has gone up to 335,000. New Horizons cost of a little over 258,000, primarily driven by special education costs, but also some increased enrollment at the governor's school. A small amount for safety and security cost. Enterprise system replacement consulting cost. As you know, we do use Oracle. We're going to be facing some rather significant cost in the upcoming next couple of years. We're going to be looking at whether we can replace this enterprise system with something that is a little more flexible for us, and also that is a little less costly for us. We have, we will be doing outsourcing of our substitutes. And then the final item is miscellaneous personnel, software, and other costs. We also have some savings from our FY 14 budget, primarily attrition. So as we brought in the new salaries, we realized a savings of almost 1.2 million. Projected savings from the retirement incentive, the retirement incentive disclosed, and we are happy to report that we believe we will hit the savings of $600,000. The cafeteria monitors, we're going to be moving to Fund 51. That's the food and nutrition fund. And so this means that these individuals will be just moving to another fund. They will have their positions. They'll just be moving from Fund 50, our general operating fund. We have a bus lease that's paid in full. And then, remember, earlier, I told you that we were expecting to have about 150 student enrollment loss. And so the 18,000 is related to that. And then finally, some savings on the Air Force ROTC calendar change that will affect two individuals. So our total projected budget shortfall is 7.2 million. So this requires reduction to our strategic focus areas. But I want to remind you that in making these reductions, we kept in mind, what can we do so that we will have the least impact on the classroom? The classroom is our core business. We have to make sure that we stay on mission. In our first goal area of maximizing every child's learning, we are proposing to make the following adjustments. Reducing elementary school counselors to SOQ levels for savings of a little over 482,000. Elimination of the Excel art program housed at Spratley for savings of almost 80,000. Efficiencies at Bridgeport Academy, and that would involve tightening up the staffing just a bit over there for savings of a little over 225,000. We would eliminate the primary years program at Burbank Elementary School and the middle years program at Lindsay for savings of a little over 162,000. Efficiencies in middle school staffing, primarily by looking at how we're doing the middle school model of teaming for savings of about 448,000. Reducing English as a second language teachers, not actually taking it all the way down to SOQ standards, but reducing for about $110,000 savings. We have about 30 part-time individuals who serve as PALS instructional assistants. That money can also be used to support our reading specialists and reading interventionists. And so that will be savings of about $389,000. The next line includes a number of things that we've put together. It includes net staffing reductions, primarily efficiencies, and some changes to some of our staffing models. But included in here are the athletic directors, the model that we were moving toward. We did the pilot at Hampton High School this year. We also put in a sub-nurse rate increase. We have some math coaches moving to an 11-month contract. We have, in this particular figure, also the contributions that Hampton City Schools will be making to the health savings accounts. And I'll be talking to you about that in just a moment. And then finally, adjustments based on enrollment and staffing models for savings of 863,000. And then finally, reducing the kindergarten instructional assistants to part-time. Currently, they work a six-hour, six-and-three-quarter-hour day. And so we will be putting them on a five-hour day, which means they'll be working about 25 hours a week for savings of 981,000. Under attract, develop, and retain exceptional staff. You know, I have to say, and I should have said this from the beginning, but all of these cuts and these proposals that we're making are extremely difficult. None of these are things, are areas that we really want to do. But we have to get to the point where we have cut and made the efficiencies so that we have the 7.2 million savings. And so the first thing on here is to reduce all supplements by 25%. So that means all co-curricular and extracurricular supplements that are given to our staff members, except for the basic needs provider supplement that is given to special education aides. And this is for savings of a little over 390,000. As you know, in earlier budgets, we have eliminated the high school instructional leader supplement, the elementary school leader instructional supplement. And so in this budget, we propose eliminating the middle school instructional leader supplement for 66,000. A one-day furlough for all of our employees on a contract that is greater than 184 days for savings of 606,000. Earlier, I talked to you about a 1.1 million increase in our health insurance. And here, we are proposing, there will be an increase in the PPO and HMO, but here, we're proposing to also add another value option for our employees called the High Deductible Health Plan, and that will affect a savings of about, almost $315,000. High Deductible Health Plan, and that will affect a savings of about, almost $315,000. And then finally, to eliminate the remaining 75% of the National Board Teachers Supplement of savings for about 154,000. You know, as you recall, National Board Teachers do receive a supplement from the state of about, of $2,500. As we've had some things come in in terms of retirement, we've looked very closely at them. We will continue to do that, but we are proposing to eliminate an assistant director in human resources for a saving of 110,000. We will be taking $100,000 from our local contribution to PEG TV and then outsourcing custodians at a savings of almost 2 million, 1.96 million. Outsourcing HVAC and consolidating maintenance positions of savings of 274,000. And included in the HVAC and consolidating maintenance positions are the warehouse individuals that, when we earlier talked to you about outsourcing, we didn't include them in there. And so this is an adjustment to that. So we'll be looking at putting our warehouse staff also outsourced with GCA. Every year, we always have to have some additional funds to make sure that we have staffing on hand to help us handle some unexpected enrollment shifts or enrollment jumps where we didn't project them. And so, and this is particularly because in our class size reduction schools, we have to be very flexible in how we have our staffing, and sometimes it comes down to one student that goes over the number. And so we have to have some money on hand in contingency funds. So we're proposing to add an additional 519,000 for contingency funds for instructional staffing. So the grand total for all of our strategic areas in terms of affecting savings is 7.2 million. Each year, we show you this chart so that you are able to see the kinds of reductions that we've made and the impact by our position classification. You know, as I told you earlier, we do everything we can to protect the classroom and the schools. And as you see from this chart, the majority of our cuts in personnel have always been at the support level, and that continues to be the case. As we look at, from FY9, which was our base year, to FY14, I told you earlier that we had cut 13.7% or 431 FTEs. Our proposal for FY15, it's 10% more, and that will be 742.5 FTEs, and that will now be 23.7% of our base from FY09. Our school-based reductions are always based on things like school closures, adjustment for enrollment losses, or changes in instructional models. I want to talk for just a moment about our health insurance. The premiums will increase in both the PPO and the HMO, and I'm going to show you a chart in just a moment that will give you some figures related to that. The average increase in our PPO will be 32%. The HMO increase, the average increase, is about 6.7%. But there will be no changes in deductibles, copays, or co-insurance for the PPO or the HMO. What we are proposing to add, that I mentioned earlier, is the High Deductible Health Plan, the HDHP, with a health savings account. And so the average, the annual contribution, we will make an annual employee or contribution to the HSA for our employees, those who elect to do it. So if it's a single employee, we will be contributing $250 a year. If it's an employee plus one, it'll be 500. An employee plus children, it'll be $750. And for a family policy, it'll be $1,000. Now, we're currently in negotiation with the company that we are looking at to partner with to do the HDHP. And so right now, it's looking at the annual deductible for an employee, single individual will be somewhere between 2,000 and 2,500. But there's no employee contribution for employee-only coverage, and I'll show you that in just a moment in the chart. We will be holding information sessions for all of our employees in April. So here's the chart, and I'll just walk you through a couple of lines. If you look at employee only, you'll notice that for the PPO, the employee is paying $150, $155.82. And for FY15, that will increase by 4220. The HMO is 6978. It will increase another $4.38. But those electing to go employee only on an HDHP, there will be no cost. Now, let's go down and look at the family. For the PPO, currently 69244. That one will have an increase of 14570. The HMO is at 42910, and the increase to that is 2695. The HDHP is 19093. So the HDHP does add a new option for our employees for health insurance, and we'll be spending a lot of time in the next, particularly in April, informing our employees about what HDHP is and whether it's something that would be a good option for them. Our school budget timetable, we have our school board hearings and deliberations, March 19th, the 26th, and then we will go for the final vote on April 2nd. Now, I know you heard me say earlier that we may not have all of our numbers in until perhaps even June, but we're still required to vote on a budget so that we can give it to our city council. And so as we're doing our budget deliberations up through April 2nd, all of the meetings will be held here at 6:30. And then on April 2nd, the board will vote on the budget, and then that budget will go over to city council sometime the first part of April. The city manager's recommended budget is due by April 15th. The city council budget deliberations will be the 23rd, May 7th, and May 14th. And then again, if we don't have the final budget from the General Assembly, then we will all be coming back to do budget amendments whenever we get our final numbers. So that concludes my presentation of the recommended operating budget for FY15.
Thank you, Dr. Shiflett. At this time, we'll entertain any questions from board members or comments at this time on Dr. Shiflett's proposal. I'll start with you, Mr. Harper.
Very depressing news, Dr. Shiflett. Could you reiterate one more time the dollar figure that equates to a decrease in 150 students?
150 students in terms of state aid is a little over $5,000 per student. Susie, do you have the, probably about 5,500 per student?
Times 150.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other comments or questions from board members? Mr. Kilgore?
I had a question about how many people are affected by the outsourcing of the HVAC.
There are 10 individuals.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments from board members? Mrs. Smith?
Just clarification on one. You had talked about the net staffing reductions and efficiency. Could you explain what that's made up of again?
Well, it's, I didn't tell you everything because it's a lot of changes. One of them was, you remember last year, we changed the model for the athletic directors?
Right.
And so part of it is that. I'm trying to find my notes, hold a second. We did put in an increase for our substitute nurses. We have a very difficult time getting substitute nurses. We had, you know, our rate of pay was extremely low, so we did increase that. We have two math coaches currently that are being funded by Gear Up Funds, and we're going to move them to 11 months like all of our other math coaches. And then a significant portion of this is also our HSA contribution. Remember the funding levels that I told you about?
Right.
And again, that's projected because at this point, we don't know how many of our employees are going to participate in our HSA. So that was the $250 for employee only, 500 for employee plus one, 750 for employee plus children, and 1,000 for family. And then also some adjustments based on enrollment and staffing models.
Okay. And where it says new special ed staffing model, is that what that's referring to?
Right. The staffing models, yes.
With the enrollment, okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mrs. Henry?
Back in the old days when we had a budget from the state sometime before July, we used to get a line item budget. Are we going to try to do that, or are we going to?
You actually do have it. It was sent to you electronically.
Okay, that's the one I can't, it won't open for me, okay.
It's the one you can find?
It's the one that doesn't want to open for me then, I guess.
Okay. I have a copy at my desk, I'll give you.
Thank you.
Other questions for Dr. Shiflett? Mr. Harper?
Just to piggyback on a question that Mr. Kilgore asked about the HVAC employees?
Yes, sir.
How many custodians will be affected by the outsourcing? The outsourcing?
It's about 214. That includes full and part-time, full and part-time.
Thank you.
Other questions from board members?
I apologize tonight, I don't know if anybody has noticed, but I'm not breathing through my nose. So I don't usually talk like this. Anything else from other board members? Okay, thank you, Dr. Shiflett. Thank you, and also thank you to our finance team for all of the difficult work you all have been involved in in the last several months. I know it has not been easy, and it's still not getting any easier, but we do know that you all are working fast and furiously crunching the numbers for us again and again. So thank you all very much for your hard work on the budget.
And Ms. Mugler, I thank you for saying that because I neglected to say it. Also, I wanted to say very special thanks to Susie Scott for stepping in upon Dr. Hellman's retirement. So, you know, I appreciate the work that he did, but my goodness, it's been wonderful to have somebody who could just step in and help us out. To Lisa and Visel and to the DLT for the work that they've done on this budget.
Thank you again, Dr. Shiflett. We move on now to the hearing of any delegations or presentation of any written communications or petitions. Ms. Bowers, would you please read the protocol?
Citizens are invited to address the school board on matters of public concern about the school division. Speaker forms are available prior to the start of the meeting. If you wish to address the school board, please complete the form and give it to the clerk. Each individual will have five minutes to speak. All comments shall be directed to the school board. Speakers may not yield their time to another. Speakers should address the school board with decorum on policy issues and refrain from personal attacks. Speakers shall not address matters involving individual employees or students as these topics may violate confidentiality and are not appropriate in a public forum. Presentation of resolutions, declarations, proclamations, manifestos, awards, or other similar documents not originated under the auspices of the school board or administration is prohibited during the public comment period. The audience is asked to be respectful of all speakers. Public comment is the school board's opportunity to listen to the speaker. Since our purpose is to hear from you, the board will not engage in dialogue with the audience or whomever is at the podium. Matters requiring a response will be directed to the superintendent for research and response. The superintendent may report back on such matters at a subsequent business meeting session as appropriate. The school board carefully considers your comments as we decide matters that are brought before us. We appreciate your attendance and your input.
Thank you, Ms. Bowers. We'll begin with, our first speaker signed up tonight is Alex Robbins.
Sorry, I'm not much of a public speaker, and I'm even worse public reader, so please bear with me. And I know it's a five-minute time restraint, so I'm not going to give you everything. I'm going to try to hit the high spots for my guys and myself. My name is Alex Robbins. I am the supervisor for the Hampton City Schools HVAC department. I am here tonight to speak on behalf of myself and my crew, they're over there. Sorry, excuse me. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of my crew in our case regarding the proposed contract to outsource the Hampton City Schools air conditioning department. We are here, it is our work philosophy, excuse me, to fix and not replace equipment. This is very important considering that over 90% of our equipment is 10 years or older, and a lot of it is a lot older than 10 years. Contract employees will not have this, that philosophy. Older equipment requires more man-hours to work and more money to fix. It is, I'm sorry, excuse me. It would be a contractor's best interest to determine that equipment can no longer be fixed and be replaced. At that point, we will have to spend money to replace the equipment, and they will not get the same deductions and discounts that we would get being a municipality as opposed to being a private industry. In some cases, a contractor will not be able to even get the equipment at all because it's sole-source equipment that they may not be able to get a hold of. To give you an example, since the beginning of the school year, we have completed 600 work orders, 80% involving Siemens equipment alone. That's the control systems, controls of temperatures, turns things on and off. Of those 480 work orders, 60%, that would be 288, involved actually touching the equipment to diagnose and repair the problems. Siemens is a priority system. They only sell to government agencies and do not allow non-Siemens technicians to install, program, or repair the equipment. But because of our history with Siemens and the training and experience of our employees, we have been able to diagnose problems, repair, and replace equipment as needed. If Hampton City Schools HVAC employees are not completed the work on these 288 work orders this year, Siemens would have had to send their own workers out at a cost of four, excuse me, of $135 an hour with a four-hour minimum to show up, and it's a $50 show-up fee just to get them here. That equates to a labor cost of $155,520 for those 288 work orders alone that we've done over the last six months from September 2013 to February 2014. If you extrapolate those figures over the remaining school year, the result will be a total labor cost of $311,040. That's for the Siemens equipment alone. These costs are currently saved by the Hampton City Schools employees that complete the work. To further demonstrate our ability to provide cost savings, Hampton City Schools recently entered into a two-year energy savings contract with a company that proposed 25% savings on utilities that would amount to $2,000 or $2 million over two years. In that time, the last six months, from October, from, excuse me, from April through September 2013, the energy management savings was $178,420, most of which those savings were accomplished through the school system staff by reducing the runtimes from 36 hours a week to 32 hours a week. We just shut down the times and tightened up the schedule a little bit. Our HVAC staff has completed several large jobs in the last two years that were not contracted out to private companies. There was 15 four-ton air conditioning units that were replaced in the 100 wing of Langley alone. There was eight six-and-a-half-ton condenser units that were reinstalled from Aberdeen when we got hit and they robbed the equipment off of the property of a working school. We've had two Siemens controllers installed into the IT repair shop over at Mallory that we did. Building-wide systems controllers were installed. The computer programs developed for each controller at Smith Elementary. Siemens controllers and point blocks were upgraded at Eaton Fundamental School. Siemens access programs were installed at Barron, Booker, Langley, Merrimack, Kraft, and Turrant using equipment we already had due to the change of the phone company. It freed up some stuff so we could update current older and update the systems. It freed up some stuff so we could update current older and update the systems. This was all done in-house. How can a private-for-profit company provide HVAC services at a lower cost than a not-for-profit public school system when the market rate for the HVAC company from Hampton Roads is higher at the private industry than it is for public? I'm gonna read you, let me find something, I'm about to run out of time, excuse me. In closing, the national education is, national education lists several problems with privatizing, contracting school support services, lower-quality services, ability, countability problems, dependability on the contractor, hidden costs, and unproven benefits. In the American Federation of State, County, Municipal Employees, it has listed several examples of contracts gone wrong with their analysis of outsourcing school support systems, including a poor-quality service, high staff turnover, and the cost of savings not being realized. The HVAC staff, we understand the budget constraints that the school system is, is facing. In the words of Keith Watkins, President of the New York State Association of Superintendent Schools, Buildings, and Grounds, "It is important to remember, companies are looking to make a profit from a school district, and because the school budgets are public, it is not hard for companies to come up with an offer that appears to save money." The HVAC employees respectfully request that the board members consider this information we have submitted to you before moving forward and looking into contracting out the HVAC department. And I do thank you for your time, and if you don't have enough copies, I can make some, I handed them to the clerk.
Very good. Thank you. Our next speaker tonight is John, is it Ratliff? John Ratliff? Good evening, Mr. Ratliff. Is it Ratliff? I'm sorry, I wanna.
Ratliff, yes, ma'am.
Okay, great.
Uh, good evening, uh, this is my first time doing this, so I'm kinda nervous, but, uh...
You'll do fine.
Thank you. Uh, I'm here for our custodian, custodian staff. I think Hampton City School got the best custodian staff ever. Why do we have to replace us? I don't know, but I, I just think, I just wish you just look in it a little bit more, all right? Because we got contractors now that do our yard work. And my experience, what I see the contractors do around the school system, half the time when they cut grass, they blow grass here and there, they don't, they don't put quality work, they don't give quality work. And the custodians of Hampton City Schools, we are role models to our young boys and girls. And you're bringing in outsiders, which I think with so much stuff going on today, y-you need to be careful, not trying to tell you what to do and everything, but we, we just, like Dr. Shiflett said, we defend what we have and we create what we want. Then defend us, because you got the best. You don't need to bring the best, you don't need to bring somebody in to replace us, or, um, you got the best. You, you have the best, and I just hope y'all will just, you know, relook at your paperwork, your numbers, your figures, and everything, and, and keep us. We, we value our school, we value our jobs. And we got a lot of custodians, it's gonna hurt. It's gonna hurt 'em hard. It's gonna really hurt 'em. Especially when they got to go on, go online, because the older custodians, they might not was brought up with computers and technology like today's society is. And if they got to go online and fill out a computer, it's gonna be hard. And I think it's gonna be detrimental to the family, to their economy wealth, wealth, or whatever they do for their family. I just think, I just hope that, you know, we just sit down, rehearse, and see can we find some, we found some money last year, so it's around here somewhere, we just gotta look deep. We just gotta dig deep, it's in there. I just, just keep your staff, keep your custodians, keep us. Buy us a shirt so we can look good, keep us. All right? Thank you.
We have one more speaker signed up tonight, and that's Yvonne Corral. Corral, C-O-R-R-A-L. Correll?
Hello.
Good evening.
I'm a little nervous, so just, um, excuse me. Um, my name is Yvonne Correll, and I'm a custodian at Smith Elementary. Been with Hampton City Schools for two years, and I love working at, at the school with the kids and cleaning and making sure everything's great. Um, I'm here today because, on behalf of the custodians, um, all 217 custodians, I, I'm very upset because when we had the meeting with GCA and with HR here and everything of that nature, and we asked question, I asked a lot of questions, and I asked specifically, what is going to happen to our pay, to our retirement, to our health insurance? And they keep putting sugar over sugar over sugar. They never could give us a direct, um, information, like, like, tell us how much we're gonna get paid. We, we had to ask over and over again, and by the end of the evening, I was frustrated because I asked a question and they were not able to answer. They went around the bush and they never answered it. And, um, if, a custodian that was sitting behind me at the point was asking, um, if, if, if our pay scale at Hampton City Schools was above or below average of the market rate, and they said that it's above average, and GCA is only gonna pay us, um, during the market, um, average, that means a pay cut to the custodians. That means we have to go through everything again. We're gonna lose our retirement, we're gonna use, lose our, um, health insurance, we're gonna have to go through Obamacare. I'm, I'm just really upset, we're gonna lose everything, and over to save, over, I don't even know, just, it's just frustrating that we work hard every day, we come to work, we, we have a connection with the students, with the principals, with the parents, and we make sure that their classrooms are clean, make sure that the school is safe for them, and now you're gonna bring in a different company that, that says that they're gonna use us at different schools in different cities because it's a, it's a contractor? I don't know about the other custodians, but I cannot leave my school to go clean another school when I have to clean the school that I'm at. And they're just, I'm just really frustrated because it's the fact that we are the best. And we are the best that, that Hampton City Schools has, and no other third-party outsourced company could ever replace us, no matter what they do at all, because they're asking us to reapply, we have to go into a different retirement, 401K, all those people that have been there for like 20, 20-some years, 17 years, they're gonna lose everything. It's our pay cut, it's our life that is gonna be affected, not you guys, it's our lives. And, and you know, I'm getting frustrated because I care about my job and I care about all the custodians, that's why I'm up here. I might, I might not be making a lot of sense, but I'm speaking out of my heart, and I just ask you guys, just reevaluate everything, look into GCA, see what they're really, uh, because they are with other companies that two of their custodians left their company to come to Hampton City Schools. So how, how efficient are they when they're coming to us? Because we are the best. You have the best custodians, you have the best HVACAC, you have everybody here defending for our jobs, and all we ask of you is take a different, take a second look and just look at all of us that we showed up, take our time in showing up to, to plead with you guys, to just take a second look to, to... Just make sure that we, that, that Hampton City Schools is making the right decision, because right now, what it looks like with GCA was telling us that day is, is very sketchy. They were not honest with us. I still don't know a lot about GCA, and that was the whole point of that meeting. So, um, thank you for your time, sorry if I got upset, but thank you for your time. Have a great night.
Uh, Madam Clerk, was that all the speaking rooms tonight?
That's all I have, yes.
Okay, very good. And thank you to all of our employees who came out to let us hear from you. As you heard from Dr. Shiflett's presentation, we, as a school board, are faced with some very difficult decisions in the coming weeks, but we will take all of your concerns into consideration, and thank you for taking time to speak to us. We'll move on now to other items for action. And we begin with item 5.01, which is the proposed 2014, 2015, 15 school calendar and the 2015-16 planning calendar. There's a little typo there. It said 2014 through 14. Um, is there a motion?
No, Chair, I move approval of item 5.01.
Second.
Has been moved by Mrs. Phillips and seconded by Mrs. Smith that we approve the 2014-15 school calendar and the 2015 proposed planning calendar. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chairman?
I just wanted to mention one more time that we appreciate the work of this calendar committee, because as you see, all the difficulties that other divisions had with getting their makeup days and all kinds of confusion, we, you all do a great job, and we really, really appreciate it.
Anything further? Ms. Bowers, would you call for the vote? Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Harper?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler? Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to item 5.02, is the Crown Castle Tower at Mallory Elementary School site co-location agreement with Verizon Wireless. Is there a motion?
Madam Chairman, move approval of item 2.5.2, the, uh...
O2.
Crown Castle Tower at Mallory Elementary School.
Second.
It's been moved by Mrs. Henry and seconded by Mr. Harper that we approve the Crown Castle Tower at Mallory Elementary co-location agreement with Verizon Wireless. Is there any discussion? Ms. Bowers, would you call for the vote? Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Harper?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler? Aye. Motion carries. Uh, moving forward, we have items 5.03 through 5.0, bleh, excuse me, 5.10, uh, which all have to do with, uh, policy. Is there a motion to approve those in block, or would anyone like to pull one?
Madam Chair, I move approval of item 5.03 to 5.10.
Second.
It's been moved by Mrs. Phillips and seconded by Mrs. Smith that we approve items 5.03 through 5.10. Those consist of policies with respect to, um, policy AGA, the recognition of accomplishment, policy IGBA, which is programs for students with disabilities, the revision of school board policy IGAD, career and technical education. Item 5.06 is the revision of school board policy IGBI, English as a second language. Uh, item 5.07 is the review of school board policy IB, academic freedom. And, uh, item 5.08, revision of school board policy IHA, grouping for instruction. Item 5.09 is the review of school board policy IE, organization of instruction. And the final, uh, policy revision up for, uh, action tonight is the revision of school board policy CBB, the appointment and term of the superintendent. Is there any discussion? There being none, Ms. Bowers, will you call for the vote, please? Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Harper?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler? Aye. Motion carries. Moving forward to our deliberation agenda tonight, beginning with item 6.01, which is the revision of school board policy JO, student records. Are there any questions or deliberation from board members on this particular policy revision? There being none, we'll move on to item 6.02, which is the revision of school board policy JB, equal educational opportunities. Are there any questions or deliberation with respect to this policy revision? There being none, we'll move to item 6.03, the revision of school board policy IFB, pilot projects. Any deliberation or questions from board members? There being none, we'll move on to 6.04, which is the revision of school board policy IHB, class size and teacher assignments. Is there any deliberation? Item 6.05 is the revision of school board policy BF, board policy manual. Uh, is there any discussion or questions for board members with respect to policy BF?
Madam Chair, there were some changes, um, I am handing them down, recommended changes. Um, it is in that new paragraph, um, that it has been offered as an addition, and the primary change is that, um, anywhere where it says revisions, the word will be changes.
Take just a moment to finish passing the paperwork down. Are there any questions from board members with respect to the proposed revisions to this policy? Mrs. Smith?
Um, just one comment, I was wondering if we could add a sentence after that paragraph that just says, "Changes will be provided to the school board for informational purposes." Just so that if a change is made, we are aware of it.
Madam Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I, I would submit that these are essentially edits for, for typographical kinds of things. And, um, you might even want to use the word edits for changes, or say, changes slash edits. None of these changes or edits will result in an updated review. I don't think the school board needs a list of all that, that just creates more paperwork. And then, then you, I'd feel compelled to go look at it, and I don't wanna go look at the thing that you found a capitalization that needed to be done. Um, I believe I mentioned before, we, we entrusted our school clerk to enter 100% of these policies onto board docs for us without batting an eye, so I think we can trust her to make any clerical changes as necessary when they come up without being notified that we ought to go look for a capital letter somewhere.
I, I don't see this as a matter of trust, it's more, in two, two different ways I see it, is, one, for the person making these changes, um, we're giving them a little bit of back, um, support in making sure they're not out there, and then something's found later that might not be substantive, and we're looking out for them in that way. But also, um, it's a school board policy, and it's just good to let our stakeholders know that, um, we are managing it properly, and it, it's just a matter of just notifying us, it doesn't have to be, um, a big list, I'm not saying there's any certain format, just, we just, I mean, need to be notified that a change was made.
How about if we just keep a running record of any edits that's in the clerk's hand? I don't think it needs to be sent to anybody, I think that's just...
I'm not worried about how it's sent to us, I'm not worried if it's, um, an email, I'm not worried if it's a table, a list, just that we're notified. That's, that's all I'm saying.
I don't, I don't think we...
Is there, uh, is there consensus on, on this from, from board members? Wanna go with the policy as submitted to us by Mrs. Reeves, or do we wish to add any additional language?
I agree with Ms. Henry. Um, I personally don't need to be notified of all changes. Any board member that does have that, um, need, then they should be notified. I agree with Ms. Henry, again, to let the policy stay as is, we got good people. We got good people that do this stuff here. And, uh, they scrutinize it emphatically and, and if any board member, I say again, wants to have, you know, copies of all the changes or notifications, I'm fine with it. I just don't need it myself.
Anyone else wish to comment?
I would like to just say, I, I think we have great people. I really do. I didn't mean anything to question the great people we have doing the job. It's just a matter of it's, the school board's responsibility. The policy's the responsibility of the school board. So that was just my thought on it.
Any other questions or comments from board members on this? So, I'd like to have a feel from, from the group how we'd like to move forward with this policy, or do we want to hold it over?
I can certainly render an opinion. I, I think, uh, I think this is fine as it is. I, I think that, uh, the purpose is, is probably to say that sometimes minor changes have to be made. We're certainly aware of any revisions in policy, new policy, deleted policy. But if someone were to, uh, make a word plural, I wouldn't want to know that. If there was a period and it should have been a comma, I don't need to know that. I don't think that would affect my thinking or understanding of the policy.
I'm, I'm one of those people that I want to know. I'm not sure that, I don't know if it has to be proceduralized in a policy. Um, I think there will be opportunity for when changes are submitted to Carolyn Bowers and they're submitted electronically, that's easy to put somebody on CC for an email. So, I, I damn one of those folks that want to know, but I, I think that can be a procedural thing versus a, a policy thing.
So, Ms. Reeves, would you, um, be able to just attach some sort of procedure to this policy that we know that there is something going to be...
I wouldn't...
Procedurely in place?
I wasn't advocating that we put a procedure attached to this. I was just...
Okay.
Yeah, the mechanism's out there to make us aware of this. But if you want it put into the policy, then you've got to use something like Ms. Smith recommended. If you want it to be just, you know, we have tons and tons of procedures that aren't in policy.
Right.
We could try that.
Madam Chair, I believe that, um, Ms. Bowers indicated that when it comes from, um, the individual who's kind of the gatekeeper of the policies, who is actually my legal assistant, and they go to Ms. Bowers, there is always an email. And it is very easy, I am understanding from Ms. Bowers, for that email to be forwarded to either all of you or those of you who wish to know. So, to whatever extent, um, the distribution needs to be directed to Ms. Bowers, my understanding is that that's not going to be a problem at all.
Okay.
I don't mean to, Ms. Mugler...
Yes, sir.
I don't mean to, uh, reflect any kind of dereliction of duty on my part, but I have a lot of faith in the people that do these things and, and that's an excellent suggestion now, Ms. Reeves. Those that want to know, they have a need to know or want to know, shoot them an email.
Okay.
I had one question. Ms. Henry indicated that she wanted it to read "changes" or "edits." Did you want both words in there? Or did you want "changes," "change" to "edits"? Or was that not a...
I think "changes" or "edits" might be a nice thing because essentially, a lot of these, if somebody's reading the policy and they notice something that's kafluie and they just want to edit it. It's not a change in the sense of they're amending it or they're emending it, they're making it better and more correct. So, I think if we use the word "emend," it will confuse people. So I think "edit" would be better.
I agree. Okay. So, Ms. Reeves, then where it says "changes," just add, "and," or "edits." Not "and," but...
"many."
Or "edits" to each of those three. Is everyone satisfied with that change?
It's going to say "changes" or "edits"?
I'm sorry?
What's it going to say, "changes" or "edits"?
Or "edits."
Not just "changes."
Or it can stay the same. It doesn't hurt my soul either way.
Okay. Well, I don't, I don't want to hurt anybody's soul, but I, I want to move this policy forward. So, uh, what's the consensus? Do we want to add the word "edits" in there or not? Mr. Kilgore's happy with that. I'm happy with that.
Adding the "edit."
Adding the word "edits."
Yeah, because the "edit" doesn't necessarily mean a change.
Okay.
It's just a review.
Right. Okay.
So you're going to take "changes" out?
I think there is consensus that, uh, this policy is ready to move forward. Action with those... Changes or edits? Correct. Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Reeves. I mean, we move on to item 6.06, which is Revision of School Board Policy GBAC, Standards of Conduct. Ruth, I see you're up to the podium. And you are having a policy that Mrs. Reeves is passing us some documents that we will discuss this one.
Yes, ma'am. There are changes, actually, to each of the three human resources policies and the one student policy relating to bullying. And so, I was going to go through those changes with you.
Okay.
Um, starting with GBAC, under definition of staff member, we have added contractor or contractors in order to be consistent. So we have the same definition through all four of these policies because they are interrelated and contractors was left out of this initial go-round. On page two, um, if you look at the section where it says Hampton City School Staff Members Shall Not, and if you go all the way to the bottom, the second bullet from the bottom, we have added a reference to Policy KG. Um, school business or use or Hampton City School Staff Members Shall Not Use or Allow the Use of School Property of Any Kind for Other Than Official School Business. And we've added "or pursuant" to Policy KG because Policy KG does allow us to rent out our facilities. And so we wanted to, to recognize that. Um, we've added KG as a cross-reference to this policy and we'll be adding GBAC as a cross-reference to KG. On page three, uh, another change that we have made, um, we have some, um, typographical changes. But if you go about halfway down, um, there's a bullet in all green. When we created the definition of staff members, we included school board members in that definition. School board members are not covered by disciplinary policies. And so therefore, we have added some specific language that allegations regarding school board members should be reported to the school board chair rather than to either a, a building administrator department head or to me, the, well, the executive director of human resources because that's protocol for the board. So we've added that language in as well. Questions about the changes to GBAC?
One thing on that page three, the third bullet down, it's still, it says principal slash department head. Is that supposed to be building administrator?
That absolutely should be, um, building administrator. And so we will get that corrected.
Thank you.
Thank you. You think you've got them all and then just another pops up.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions, concerns about GBAC?
Anything further? Moving now to GBACC or...
Yeah, um, yes, ma'am, that's the next, uh, yes, ma'am. Um, this is our Maintaining Professional Staff/Student Boundaries Policy. Changes to this one start on page three. Um, and you'll notice at the end, at the bottom of the page, we are removing the language about, um, parents being able to, to opt out from electronic communications with their student, um, for their students. Um, we've had a couple of board members who had requested that language be removed. As we try to move forward with our one-to-one initiative and the goal to have an electronic device in the, the hands of every child, instructionally, we won't be able to get away from, uh, staff members and in particular, teachers sending communications electronically. So we have removed that from the policy. Skipping over to page four, towards the bottom, under the section for consequences, I've actually, again, going back to some of my comments from GBAC, we have specifically changed the language from staff members back to employees when we talk about consequences. Because from a policy perspective, we can only administer consequences to employees. Uh, we cannot administer, as a school division, consequences to school board members. We cannot administer consequences to contractors or tutors, volunteers. Now, we may ask volunteers or tutors not to volunteer or tutor for us anymore. But, um, with contractors and, and school board members, there are no consequences that we can administer. So we specifically changed that back to employee, excuse me, employees. We will notify the appropriate employer or university if there is a violation, but it will be their responsibility to administer consequences if they feel they're necessary. And again, if a school board member violates a policy, we're requesting that people report it to the school board chair. If any of these staff members violate anything that needs to be reported to CPS or to the police, we will still do that regardless of, of your status, whether you're a school board member, volunteer, contractor, because we are mandated reporters. So that, that piece will remain the same.
I think Mr. Harper had a question.
Yes, sir.
Uh, real quickly, uh, you mentioned, uh, that the school board and contractors are not covered by this policy.
It's not that they're not covered by the poli... They are covered by the policy, but when it comes to consequences, for instance, if we have a teacher who violates this policy, there are, you know, we can, there are administrative consequences that we can put in place, anything from a letter of reprimand to a recommendation for dismissal. If a school board member violates this policy, the, the administration cannot recommend your dismissal. So, from the, for consequences, no. School board members and contractors would not be covered by consequences, but you are covered by all the rest of the content of the policy.
So, that includes, uh, any outsourcing contractors?
Correct. That we cannot administer, uh, administrate consequences. What we can do is have a conversation with either the school board chair, if it's a school board member, or the contracting agency. For instance, outsourced, um, Source for Teachers. If we have a substitute who violates this policy after April 14th, I would call the human resources manager for Source for Teachers and say, "Donald Duck did such and such today and we no longer want Donald Duck working in our buildings." And then they would determine what Donald Duck's consequences would be, whether Donald Duck would continue to be an employee of Source for Teachers and work for other school divisions, or whether they would end Donald's employment as well.
What if Donald Duck works for, um, GMA? The, um, is that the name of the...
G, are you referring...
GCA.
GCA? It would be the same principle. We would contact either their human resources manager, whoever their operations manager is. We'd contact them and say, "We no longer want Pluto working as a custodian in our buildings." Um, and they would, they would handle it as to whether or not they'd put Pluto to work in another school, uh, school division, or whether or not they would agree that Pluto perhaps needs not to be employed with them either.
Mr. Harper, each one of our contracts with contractors requires them to assure that their employees are going to abide by policies, but we can't do the consequences. It's the contracting company that has to dole out the consequences.
So then we would put a statement into the contract?
They're in all our contracts.
That, that statement already exists.
Thank you, Ms. Ruth.
You're welcome. Any other questions or concerns?
Mr. Kilgore?
Um, on page one, in the staff member definition...
Yes, sir.
We left out tutors.
We certainly did. I thought that had been added. Yes, sir. We'll add that.
Add Disney characters too.
All right. Any, any further revisions on this policy that you haven't addressed?
Um, other than some additions to the, additions and deletions to the cross-references... Oh, yes, actually, there is. Um, one more addition that we made on page five, under reporting, the language that you received last week just stated, um, the, in accordance with board policy, we have added the specific board policy and the specific code reference. Just to be a little more precise.
Okay, okay. Any questions for Ms. Ruth on, uh, Policy GBACC? All right. We'll move on to our... I'm sorry, there's something sticking on my screen here. Uh, we'll move it on to GBACCA?
Yes, ma'am.
Very good.
Okay. For GBACC, GBACCA, these letter configurations are getting...
It's a tongue twister.
Again, this is the, the matching policy with a student policy. We have added the code reference, uh, to, uh, the code section that refers to the reporting of certain acts to Child Protective Services. So that code reference has been added. We added tutors in this one. And, um, in policy detail, in that sec, the second paragraph, right at the bottom of page one, um, we wanted to, the, the scope of, um, this policy includes staff-on-staff bullying, but it also includes when staff members bully students. And we wanted to make sure that that was clear. So we added some, um, clarifying language. Therefore, the Hampton City School Board strictly prohibits bullying and s... Actually, I think that bullying of students or staff members in, oh, prohibits bullying and students or staff members engaging in such behavior are subject to disciplinary action. Sorry, I think there needs to be a comma there. So we will add that comma. But we wanted folks to understand, hm?
No comma. It just...
Okay.
A comma makes it worse.
Okay.
You just have to keep reading fast.
Is that, okay.
Or is it better to put a period and to start?
New sentence might be nice.
Okay. We had it both ways this afternoon. So, we will make that two separate sentences. And then on page two, we have added the same sentence about allegations involving school board members should be reported to the school board chairperson.
You might, Ms. Reeves, you might want to, instead of saying, "Therefore," at the beginning of the paragraph, say that, just restate the fact that's, that's clear, that the Hampton City School strictly prohibits bullying and therefore, students and staff. That makes your sentence work better.
That works.
One thing on this one, um, would it be possible? I know on some of the student policies that deal with disciplinary stuff, we reference the Rights and Responsibility Handbook. Could that be added as a cross-reference for this one?
I'm not sure that I would add it to the employee version of the policy, but we can certainly look at adding it to the, the student.
Right.
Because we're not going to, when, when we've got a, an employee, an adult, or any staff member that's bullying a student, we're not going to reference the Student Rights and Responsibilities Handbook. So I would not recommend putting it on here.
So I would not recommend putting it on here. If it's the desire of the board that it be added, we certainly can't.
I'm just talking about JGB.
For JGB?
Yeah.
Yes, that would be appropriate.
That's what I meant.
Yeah.
Oh, we haven't gotten to JGB yet.
We have not, although all of the...
I'm sorry, I'm jumping ahead, I guess.
Yeah. Ooh, don't jump ahead.
Any other questions or concerns with prohibition of bullying staff members?
Okay, we'll move on then to our final policy for deliberation, which is item 6.09, policy JGB, prohibition of bullying students. And that's where we want to add that.
That's the one.
Yes. And that would make sense for this particular policy. Yes, ma'am. And all of the changes to this policy mirror the changes that I just referenced in the employee policy.
Any questions for Ms. Ruth on this policy revision? There being no questions, you are off the hot seat for tonight. Thank you, Ms. Ruth. We move on to informational items and upcoming meetings. March 19th is another public hearing, the FY14 Proposed Budget. That will be 6:30 PM here at Jones Magnet Middle School. March 26th is a public hearing on FY14 Proposed Budget, again, and that's at 6:30, right here at Jones Magnet Middle School. And our final public hearing on the budget will be April 12th, and the adoption of the FY2014-15 budget will take place at that meeting. And that, again, will be at 6:30 PM here at Jones Magnet Middle School. So we'll be visiting Jones quite a bit this month. We move to any other informational items. Dr. Shifflin?
Just a couple of events coming up. On Saturday, March 15th, the Boys Conference will take place at Kikatane High School, beginning at 8:30 and lasting until 12:30. This is an annual event put on by the school social workers. And then a reminder that our Citizen of the Month luncheon is Monday, March 17th, at 11:30. And then on Tuesday, March 18th, the Youth Art Month Celebration will take place at City Hall, beginning at 6:00 PM.
Any other informational items from school board members?
Just one quick.
Mr. Harper?
I'm not speaking for the whole board, certainly, but I'd like to give my condolences to Mr. Rudy Langford's family and his passing recently. He was a guy that could antagonize as well as tantalize. So all due respects to him and his family, and we will probably miss him a whole lot. Thank you.
He was one of a kind, for sure.
No question.
He will be, he will be missed. Any other items from board members? If not, this meeting is adjourned.